Hey Maria, if you can hear me, can you do a mic test for me so I can make sure you're coming through on our end, please?
My name is Maria Horton. I have a number if I'm a prisoner of war. What would you like to hear?
Perfect, thank you.
I want to hear you sing a show tune.
No, I can't do that. I only have a couple things to say today, but nice to see you Larry. Here, wait, let me show my face. I had it on before.
Oh, you had video acting? Ah, good. Where were you?
Where am I?
Yeah.
If I told you, am I gonna get... I'm spending my money at the casinos in Biloxi, Mississippi.
The stream is going. The stream is going.
Is it going okay? Oh, I think we were getting chastised there.
My apologies.
It turned off yesterday.
It's turned off yesterday.
Tonight, Maria Horton will be joining by phone. Robert Lambert will be absent and Ed is running late from another meeting, so he'll be here and as an alternate, he'll step in and take Robert's place. So... Do you have a motion for approval of the agenda, please? Motion been made. Fred, do I have a second?
Second.
Doug? Thank you, Doug. Motion been made, a second, any further discussion? Here and none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's aye, everybody. Okay, good. I want to make sure I heard that correctly. Next up is the approval of the minutes from June 19th. I had a couple of changes that I passed over to city staff. One that I thought was a little on the funny side was that they had us adjourning at 11:10 a.m. after starting at 6:00 p.m. I know we can have some long meetings, but I don't ever want to set that record for the longest meeting that Southports ever had, so we need to just check that, that closing time or adjournment time if we could, but uh... Anybody else have any... Well, let me entertain a motion around the minutes for us, sorry, to approve them. John, thank you. Do I have a second? Doug, thank you. Any discussion other than what I brought up on the minutes? Okay, here and none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take that as an aye. Opposed, abstained. So, motion carries unanimously. Public comment. Madam Secretary, any public comment tonight? Or Matt, Mr. Secretary, whichever, whoever's filling that role, I'll say no. No, okay. Any public comment? We don't have any committee reports. We're whizzing right along. We'll be home just in time to watch Houston and Buffalo duke it out. Or watching the Ken Burns revolution. So, going into old business, Planning Board Rules of Procedure, those are on page 16 of your agenda. What I was hoping tonight is not to get into any deep discussion on those rules as well as the Planning Board Primer. I hope everybody... We'll take some time to go through these so that in January, we can vote on them and also recommend them over to the Board of Alderman so they can review them as well. So anyway, any quick thoughts on the rules of procedure at all? Okay, I think that is no. So we'll put those on the agenda for approval. Maria, are you okay with that too? Put them on the agenda for January?
I am. I thought that they were... I thought that the rules of procedures were very well done. I thought they went through all of the items that we need to consider, so I think that's perfect to put them on for January.
Great, thank you. So if nobody's opposed, we'll just leave that as, as is for January. Great. Okay, Planning Board Primer/Handbook. It's on page 36 of your agenda. I'd like to do the same thing. The work is phenomenal. Now that we have a vacancy, we'll be going on to our 18th member in three or four, five years, so that's quite a bit. So this, this handbook will be the real test for the new member that we bring on board to see how they can, if they can understand everything we do. So what I would ask on, on both of these is that not wait till January, but if you have some recommendations, send them in to Scott, or to Mo, or to Wendell, and we'll collect them and then we'll put them all together in a package and we'll have them for review in, in January so that we can review them. I thought the package was great. I liked it a lot. It really gave some good information. You guys did a really nice job on it. When I say guys, I mean women too, of course. I, I think it just is phenomenal. It'll help. I, I look at it this way. It's not going to just help the Southport Planning Board. It's going to help other planning boards in the area as well to understand. I've never found another one out there, so this is going to be really, really helpful, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into this. So, any other thoughts?
Yes, Chair, may I, may I offer a thought?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, I would like the Planning Board to consider whether we should add to the Primer a short discussion and description on the future land use map, the flume, as well as overlays. There are some definitions that I met with Ms. Meehan about, and as I look at the Primer, I think those are essential tools for someone coming on, onboard the Planning Board.
I think that'd be a good idea. Yeah. Do you have some, something in writing already to go, or what are your thoughts?
I do, I do, but I probably will not get it out to you until this weekend.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah. No hurry. We've got, we've got a month. Actually, we've got about two months.
I will add it. It will be more of a definition and a tip, like we've done the rest of the Primer, but I do think it needs to be included because it is a tool.
Okay. John? Thank you, Maria.
Yes. So, so we have two documents. I think we need to think about the hierarchy of the documents. How, how do they relate to each other? There, there's some overlaps in the Primer and the rules, but I think we have to make it clear, maybe in the Primer, where that fits in relation to the rules and then all the other regulatory citations that are in both documents. So, I, I think it's, it's a nice document. I think my, my comments were, if I'm reading something here that's covered in the, the rules, you know, where do I... Where do I place my allegiance, you know, in, in the rules of the Primer?
So, you're thinking that maybe we shouldn't have any overlap at all, or reference to the handbook, or...
Well, I think the Primer should refer to the rules.
Okay.
I would think. And in areas where there's overlap, we, we can probably reduce the level of detail on one or the other.
Yeah.
Chair, may I, Chair, may I comment?
Absolutely.
Um, when a new member comes on board, one of the reasons for the Primer was to prepare someone to assume their responsibilities. Where there is overlap, the overlap should be identical, but the Primer is really, I would look at it more as an orientation Primer. Like you have any new job, it is an orientation document. The rules and procedures should be the foundation for the decisions and actions taken by the Board. So as long as the overlaps do not conflict with one another, the Primer is used only when a new member joins or when an, an existing member may need to refresh their memory on how things work.
John, thoughts?
Understood. It's just if you, you don't want to be reading both at the same time.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be my concern.
And I think that's also where we rely on city staff, so that the Primer is a way for people to learn how the Board operates. The procedures are, rules of procedure are a way that we do operate, and then if we get hung up on anything, that's where city staff comes in and shakes us up a bit and tells us how to do it correctly if we're doing it wrong. Yeah, that makes sense. Maria, thank you. Doug, anything?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, would I toss in, because these are, these are great thoughts. My, my thought was, okay, I'm going to read both of these documents. How would I know if what I'm seeing is good, bad, or indifferent? And John, you caught it. If I'm seeing some overlap, I should be looking for overlap. And if I see it, then I think my question would be, is it appropriate? If it doesn't seem appropriate, mark it, because that, there, there shouldn't be. If there is some overlap, it should only, should only be reinforcing. And I think, John, to your question, hey, is there a hierarchy? I, I would not think that these two, that one nests underneath another in particular. They're more both parallel to help us do what we do. They're just answering different questions about how we do what we do. So if you see, then if that's the case, if you see them also as parallel, then the question is, is, in some way, are they competitive? Because that would be not helpful either, and we'd need to get that gone.
No, that would not be helpful at all if they, if they competed with each other. We've got to also make sure that the purpose statement at the beginning of each one is, is sufficient too, to make sure that people understand. And it's also part of training the members and saying, look, this is, this gives you an, the Primer gives you an overview. The procedure tells you how to, how to act in a meeting, essentially, so... Fred, anything? All right, so if nobody is opposed, can we revisit these for votes in January? Take that as a yes by everybody. Okay. Thank you. Nice work all the way around. This is going to be really helpful when we start off 2026. We have... Um, I'm taking a deep breath because we have a lot of work in 2026 coming ahead of us. It's not all going to be done in 2026, but at least we'll get the ball rolling on a lot of different things. Uh, next up, text amendments on page 46 of your handout tonight. We have the UDO text amendment ZTA 25-5 vape tobacco shops. And what we'll be doing tonight is making a recommendation of approval or non-approval to the Board of Alderman. If we approve it, then recommend approval to the Board of Alderman, then we'll have to have the consistency statement read. Wendell, you're up.
Thank you, Board members and Mr. Chair. I appreciate you guys' time for tonight. As was mentioned, I'm presenting on text amendment concerning vaporizers and/or tobacco retail chains, excuse me, stores. Henceforth, they'll all be known as vape shops, just so that there's no confusion while I'm speaking about. Maybe if I turn this on.
Wendell, just so I'm clear, this is also a request by the Board of Alderman as well.
That is correct. At a very recent Alderman meeting, one of our leaders had asked that we brought this forward. I was going to get to that. Yes, sir. But ZTA 25-05 is a text amendment proposal brought forth by the Alderman, well, requested by the Alderman, so that we can start controlling the way was normally a general retail practice, vaporizer and/or vape shops. And so that we can make sure that our city stays kind of organized with the process of new ones coming in. Here's a little image, couple of images of what vape shops are generally recognized as having tobacco paraphernalia, really loud, vibrant signage. And it's kind of important that you see this because one of the things that Director Meehan and myself started off with is just defining, how do we define a, a tobacco vape shop? And what we came up with is a conglomeration of other organizations' definition, but we kind of curtailed it to Southports. And I will read, "A vape tobacco shop will be a retail establishment where 30% or more retail floor area or total cells is dedicated to e-cigarettes, vaporizers, nicotine products, kratom, CBD, hookahs, and other smoking paraphernalia." Here we have our proposed language in Article 3. As you guys can see at the very top, that is our table of land uses. Just a quick rundown on what that is. Every specific land use that we've identified as a land use in Southports, we list it in this table here. Next to that is an ICS index. And then next to that are all the available, are all the available zoning districts that that land use can be presented in. If there's a space under that zoning district, that means that land use is null and void, is not permitted to be there. There's no variance to get around that. Short of a rezoning, you cannot put said land use where there's nothing underneath that zoning district. Uh, we also have the letter P to indicate that P stands for permitted by rights. Then we have a letter PS, which stands for permitted by rights with specific use standards. We also have S, which means it is required to go before the Board of Adjustments for a special, special use permit. And then we have SS, which is same situation, Board of Adjustment, special use permits, but also has specific use standards. And as you can see, what we did is we changed, well, we created this land use, vape tobacco shop. We added our own idea of what use standards we thought were appropriate for said vape tobacco shops. Number one, location shall not be less than 1,000 feet from a school, daycare, youth facility, community center, city park, hospital, or place of worship. Two, location shall not be within 500 feet of residentially zoned property. Three, location shall not be within 1,000 feet of any other established vape tobacco shop. Four, signage must meet the requirements of Section 319 of this ordinance. So essentially, what we did is said, hey, this general retail idea that could essentially go anywhere, that general retail is allowed, we said no. We said, no, we're going to carve it out. We're going to make it so land use. And we are going to make sure that whoever wants to do that has to go before the Board of Adjustments to get special use permits. And as part of the Board of Adjustment, making their decision to grant said special use permits. The applicant would have to fulfill all four of those standards that we've outlined here. These standards are pretty synonymous with other North Carolina jurisdictions. Uh, we borrowed a lot from other counties. Particularly Jacksonville, uh, um, a- and, um, Mecklenburg, et cetera. We, um, we didn't really reinvent the wheel here. We just brought it forth to Southports. So for a tax amendment like this, our next steps are to consider the recommendation. Um, you as the board are here to make a recommendation, whether you like this idea and you want to approve it for the, uh. Recommendation for approval to the Board of Adjustment, excuse me, Board of Alderman. Or if you want to send it back to, uh, staff for further working out. This completes my, yes, ma'am.
I have some questions.
Wait, let me, um, I need to intend a motion first on this before we, uh, go into discussion.
This completes my, uh, my presentation. I can answer any specific questions about it or the staff report that you may have. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Do you mind? Should we make a motion?
Please.
Okay. Can I have a motion on this? So then we can open up a discussion, please. Motion to recommend this, um, to be, a motion to approve recommending or to recommend this for approval to the Board of Alderman.
Can we hold on that motion until we have some, uh, questions and answers?
If you'd like.
Yep.
Sure. Maria, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I don't want to make a recommendation until I have a couple of questions answered. Number one, you have a number of parameters for a vape or tobacco shop. Are there any locations in the high traffic areas that actually meet these four locations when you look on a land use map?
Excellent question. Director Mihen and I actually considered that because one thing we don't want to do is be accused of creating standards. That would essentially zone out quote unquote allowed land use. Uh, that would set us up for some kind of, uh, retribution such as, uh, uh, legal, um, uh, lawsuits, whatnot. So, no, we, we looked at our land use map, we looked at zoning maps, and there are spaces that can accommodate these parameters, ma'am.
Can you share with us where those might be?
Um, mostly along Highway one thirty, not one thirty-three, excuse me, two eleven, uh, in the, uh. Highway Commercial District, uh, there's several spaces there that are not next to or as close to residentially zoned property. Um, and certainly, uh, are a thousand feet or more away from those, uh, items listed in number one. Um, I did not think to come prepared with a, a list of available. Places, but i- it's usually, not usually, uh, what we specifically spotted was, uh, there's a good location along, uh. Highway two eleven that, that people could ostensibly set up shop there.
I have, I have one more question. When I look at vape.
Maria, hold on if you would just a second. I just have to make an announcement. Ed, Ed is here. Ed will be. As our alternate member, we'll be sitting in for, uh, Robert Lambert tonight. Thank you. Thanks, Maria. Please go on.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I can't fully see you with the presentation, so I, I didn't know that. Um, my second question is that when I look at vape and tobacco shop and greater than thirty percent of the floor space. I think about some growing cities where people have tobacco shops. Where they have a cigar shop or they entertain drinking and smoking. As a more, mm, as a luxury, if you will, when you're on vacation or you're visiting an area. Are you considering those types of shops the same as a vape and tobacco shop? Because in my mind, they are different.
We did consider that, um, we didn't look at the aspect of a, a quote unquote cigar shop that is. Curtailed to a more, uh, wealthier clientele or that's more of a, uh, um, of a leisurely practice. Um, that wasn't part of the equation when we made up this, but we did consider what we wanted to entail. And essentially it came down to how do we make sure that this is something that we can, one, enforce? And two, not have any, uh, issues such as saying, well, the Circle K down the road, they sell tobacco too. Does this keep them from being able to? So that's where we landed on the thirty percent thing, uh, but as far as like, um. Clientele, uh, uh, quality, for lack of a better term, uh, that was not part of our equation, ma'am. No.
So I think of smoking and drinking. Hi, I'm going to have a bourbon and a cigar on a, a vacation. That is much different than, hey, I'm having CBD and kratom. And, um, I would recommend consideration of defining that type of shop. Differently than just bake vape and tobacco.
Uh, noted, ma'am.
That's all. Thank you.
Those are good questions, Maria. Um. I do have a, a follow-up on that too. So as long as you're, same idea as Maria was asking, as long as you're staying below that thirty percent threshold. It's allowable then. So such as a, a cigar shop or something like that, as, as long as they're, they're not devoting more than. Is it thirty percent, thirty percent or more? So as long as they're not devoting thirty percent or more to vape products.
To vape or tobacco products.
Vape.
Or paraphernalia. Or kratom or CBD.
So what happens when you have a cigar shop that, um, you're going to play devil's advocate here?
Then they get to have the benefit of going before the Board of Adjustment and making their case present.
Okay. Thank you. Other members?
Uh, question. The existing vape shop where Zedel Goose or Unleashed was located on two eleven, is that city limits?
Uh, Director Mihen just told me, yes. I apologize. I didn't quite know if that was city limits or not.
Right. It's can be confusing. So with that one. With the church almost directly across the street, is, is that one?
No, that would be legally nonconforming, uh, as they established before this. Uh, text amendment ever came into fruition. So they would technically be considered illegal nonconformity. If they were to border shop doors for a hundred and eighty-one days, however, then they would be subjected to this. Uh, standard should the Board of Alderman go on it and approve it.
Okay. Going forward, that location would not be allowed because of the thousand feet.
If they're in, within a thousand feet of the church, correct, sir.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure about the thousand feet, if that one's. In compliance or not, just to curiosity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Warren, I didn't catch what your question was there.
Could they sell their business, much like you sell a liquor license in some locations? Could they sell their business and keep it there?
Yes, as long as it was a hundred and eighty days of consecutive use, then they don't fall into that illegal nonconformity aspect of it. Um, if they sell the business and the new purchaser sits on it for a hundred and eighty-one days. Then they are back to square one. Apologize if I'm being too loud. They're back to square one and then they, that new owner would then have to get a s- a special use permit.
Okay.
So. Again. Location shall not be within five hundred feet of a resi- residentially zoned property. Just so I'm clear and for the public's edification, I guess. Um, if you have an existing vape shop and somebody puts a home or the area behind it suddenly becomes zoned residential. Doesn't have to have a house in it, but it, it, that does not mean, mean they're going to close the doors. They are now grandfathered.
That is correct, sir. No, just because they set up shop and they, they got the special use permit approval, that stays with the land. At infinitum and should an adjacent neighbor turn into a residentially zoned district? That's not going to be used against that shopkeeper or, or that land use right there after the fact.
Mr. Chair, um, so maybe I'll pick on, um, some of the issues Maria is, the, first off, thirty percent. Rough idea where that, uh, it sounds like you've got a good idea where it was derived from. Why? Why not thirty-one? Why not twenty-nine?
Thirty percent, we, we actually started at, um, a little bit higher of a number. And we just kept working it down because what we wanted to really ensure is that someone can fly under the radar of. Saying, hey, but we sell comic books and fifty-one percent of it may be comic books, but forty-nine percent is vape.
Yeah.
Or whatever. So we set the bar at thirty percent. This is a standard that we saw in other or jurisdictions.
Okay.
Um, it wa- it was fairly common, um, uh, the retail cell and retail space dedicated to smoking paraphernalia. And or tobacco or any of that ilk. That all comes into the equation here and at thirty percent.
Uh, so I'm, Maria, you sparked my imagination now. Um, so there is a cigar lounge that may or may not have alcohol. And now I'm trying to think of this thirty percent of the floor space for retail. So. Um, that, that strikes me when I go into a comic book shop, there's parts of the shop I can go into. That's the retail space. And then there's parts of the store I don't go into. I'm not allowed, but they still have comic books back there. So I'm, I'm wondering, um, if I was, if I had all my cigar, cigarette, vape, uh, hookah products. In the non-retail space as well as my alcohol, if that was served as well, then that thirty percent apparently wouldn't apply. Um, how, how would we? Um, if there was no alcohol being sold, how would we? Manage that type of situation? Is there anything in U D O? Nothing's hopping out at me.
Excuse me. I think that'd be a case by case basis that I, as a city planner, when the development review comes through, I'm, I'm scanning for that.
Yep.
And that's something that I would talk about with the, the, the proprietor, uh, what they're trying to do. What is their aim here? All right. And if they are trying ultimately to say, well, we're not dedicating thirty percent, we're dedicating twenty-nine percent to, uh. Just the, the CBD or whatever sells, um, I'm going to request that they would, with Director Mihen's guidance here. Go get the special use permit. That way it's all above board.
Yeah.
I, I hear your question. Um, I guess that, there's no way to, you know, safeguard against everyone trying to fly below this radar. Or any radar that we set up regardless of what, but that's just part of the job is just doing the due diligence and looking at what's being proposed.
Yep.
And applying the standard as efficiently and as, uh, consistently across the board.
Yeah, okay. So thank you. Um, I guess.
May I ask one more question?
Uh, if Doug is done.
Yeah, almost, al- almost, Maria. Um. Then I don't know if we want to, if the intent is to not allow that situation, then it looks like we need to give this language a little bit more attention. If that doesn't concern any of us, then. Yeah, it would be, um, here, uh, I'm, I'm throwing the dial all the way over in this case, Wendell, and I'm saying, we don't have any of our retail. In fact, we don't have retail space in our lounge. We got lots of goodies in the back. You just let your attendant know and they will bring them out to you and suddenly. Out comes the vape, out comes the, whatever it is we're trying to, uh, manage here. Um, that, that would be my concern.
Well, I think ATF also has some standards regarding that. Um, yeah.
I don't know what they are, so.
I, I, I'm speculating, but I, I do recognize that ATF and, and the state tax man is going to have their say about situations like that.
Yeah. So. If it's, if it's, uh, um, so again, Mr. Chair, just, I'm, I'm speaking out loud, not from a whole lot of education here. But if, uh, the tax person would be asking questions that would identify how a business works and what it does. Um, then we should be edified by those questions and make that perhaps a stipulation along with thirty percent, a thousand feet, five hundred feet.
Yep. Absolutely. I, I can totally take that and run with that and, and represent with said amendment if that is the consensus of the board. Um, something that Director Mihen and myself are equal to the task of doing.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Can you restate that, Doug?
Yep, um, I, I, I'm going to, uh, one way to think about, um, the constraints and restraints here, Maria, one, two, three, four. Under the paragraph, where permitted, the following shall apply. Yeah, uh, paragraph three point eight. Um, each one of those in a sense is an answer to a question. And if, um, we're not asking the questions that are pertinent, we're not going to have an answer that we specify. Under, um, paragraph three point eight. It could be.
I understand what you're saying.
Got it.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I think that's very good. I'm going to go back to my discussion, which if we look at the slide. We're restricting the thirty percent in sales. I'm looking at a cigar shop that is not doing sales. Like paraphernalia or e-cigarettes, but I'm going to use the cigar shop on, is that eighty-seven? Where they're serving you alcohol and cigars while you're in there. It's a place gentlemen typically smoke. Sometimes women go in. But it's not all these other things, CBD, kratom, hookahs. I see that very differently. Than, um, men or women who want to smoke a cigar and a pipe and have a glass of bourbon. And I think there should be a distinction. I'm okay with the same listings. But I don't look at a vape shop as the same as a cigar shop. Those definitions are very different because. As written, to me, this is a vape shop. It's not a quote tobacco shop because you can sell pipes. You can sell tobacco that goes in pipes. That might not be as offensive. As some of these other things are. And so that's kind of where I'm, Wendell, I'm looking for a little more definition.
So you're thinking a cigar bar is what you're thinking of?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep. Um, Maria, any other?
No, that's all. Thank you. I'm sorry to take so long.
No, no, this is good, good discussion. It really is.
So I, I Googled cigar bars and there's the best ten cigar bars near Southport. Um, so cigar bar is a term and I think it's a very, maybe a different concept than a vape shop or a tobacco shop. I guess the question is, are, are we lumping them together or not? If we're lumping them together, we should say vape, tobacco, cigar bar, you know, lump them together. If we're, if we're excluding them, we should probably add a statement that says. Um, you know, a permitted, um, you know, bar that, you know, ha- sells and consumes cigars is not included.
You're right. Actually call them out and say it is not included in this.
Well, if that's the intent, and I, I'm not sure what the intent is. But I, I agree with Doug and Maria that there, there, there is that little thing hanging out there that. If we care to try to encompass it, we need to either include it as, as, as something that we're limiting. The, the use or excluding.
Pardon me for asking. I, I guess, um, when we were charged with this by the Alderman, um, that the concern is, as I saw it. Was, you know, just to regulate something that could very well turn us to looking like Myrtle Beach, you know, um, no offense to them, but, uh. Uh, that's kind of what the, the impetus was behind this definition and where we're going with it. Um, something that wasn't part of the equation was cigar bars. By the end of the day, um, does. Is there an issue with a cigar bar meeting these standards that we are suggesting here? A thousand feet from a school, daycare, youth facility, church, et cetera. Uh, is there an issue with number two, number three, number four? Um, and if there's not an issue with a requiring a cigar bar to meet those standards, then I guess it's. It should be lumped in with just a vape shop and they go before the Board of Adjustment and they apply for the appropriate special use permits. I, i- is I, am I making sense? I, I guess.
I would offer that you should in, I have no problem with a cigar bar having to meet the four items that you have here. The thirty percent in retail sales related to paraphernalia. I think you need a slightly different measure for services in a cigar bar where people may come. Because although we may not want to be like Myrtle Beach where people are going down there and there's all kinds of craziness. There is a luxury aspect to individuals with high incomes who come. And so. I'm okay with the four elements, but I do think they need to be, I would recommend that they be culled out separately. Because a cigar bar may have an A B C license, it may do services. It would not necessarily be selling, hey, I'm going to run in and get my kratom for the night and leave, right?
Yes, ma'am. I'm tracking that. I, I, I just want to express that wasn't part of our consideration when we wrote this. We were just going to treat any kind of tobacco cells where that is the primary cell or thirty-one percent plus of their cells as a, a vape tobacco store.
So let me take a shot at this too. Maria, you all set before I interrupt you? So let me take a shot at this too. Maria, you all set before I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Um, nicotine products, cigars would count as nicotine products. So total sales. How is that measured? And I'll give you an example. Years ago, as a banker, had a customer was told that we needed, he needed to show his sales to us. And he came in with a lunch bag full of receipts and accounts receivable slips and all this stuff and dumped them out and said, here, here you go. Here's all my financial statements. So what kind of financial statements would determine total sales? Are we talking a lunch bag full? Are we talking audited statements for proof? How would, how would you define that?
That is a great question. Um, a retail establishment where thirty percent or more retail floor area or total sales. That's why we have the floor area there too, as a, as a means of catching it. Basically, if it looks like a.
Twenty-five percent of the floor area, but I could have fifty percent of my sales are dedicated to tobacco products and things like that. How are you gonna determine, how are you gonna determine the financial statements for those total sales? How would you do that? And I'm not try, and I know it sounded ea- easy on the outside, but you have to look at to one customer, the type of statement they're doing compared to another customer might be entirely different. So you need to have some set standard, what you mean, what, how you can prove total sales. And can you even do that with a business? You know, how, how much is that invasion of privacy, you know, for a company?
No, sir, you can do it. You can use North Carolina sales tax. You can ask them to bring in their annual statement as a requirement of their North Carolina sales tax in which it would be broken down.
Does the sales tax break out tobacco products?
Um, in all likelihood, it does. I am not an expert on, um, tobacco itself, but you don't wanna use financially audited statements because that costs anywhere from eight to twelve thousand dollars a year. If you use sales tax, it's something that's required and the county would get to see it. Because when they do their sales, they have to submit the North Carolina sales tax to the city. And they have to have some type of tracking device related to do that.
Okay. But I think we need to define it. How are you gonna measure that?
May I ask if the definition is the big hangup or is it a combination of the definition? Um, and the, uh, the specific use standards? Are, are we okay with the, the zoning designator and the specific use standards? Um, just so that I have some direction on how to craft this better for you.
Yeah, I guess I think what I would just be a little concerned over, which one trumps the other? Is it retail floor area or total sales? Or if it's any one of those two items?
As I wrote it, I would say any one of those two items. The, the or there says, yeah.
Mr. Chair, uh, it could be too that we're making this a little hard, too hard because of the, because of the inappropriate way that the gentleman, uh, you asked a question, he gave you an answer, but he didn't answer your question. You didn't ask him how many sales receipts and stuff he could get in a bag. Um, the, the basic, right? The, the basic question was, what is your number of units of kratom, it's nicotine products, whatever times his total sales price per unit? That's pretty easy. Uh, I think it's pretty standard. Uh, I, it may be we already have what we need. And we just have to have people answer the question that we ask.
Well, I don't smoke, so I don't know. Is there a separate sales tax on tobacco products?
I'm being told that there is. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, and it might be regardless, uh, of what any tax is. You sell cigars? Yes. How many did you sell? And what was the unit price? I'm gonna multiply those two together, and I just got what you got for cigars. Did you have any kratom? Did you have any other nicotine products? Um, these are pretty simple questions.
It is unless you're looking at total sales of a facility. So a retail environment that, then you have to look at all the other products they're selling as well. Cause it's thirty percent of total sales.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So are we, are we limiting ourselves then to, um, I, I don't need to know about comic books. This is not what we're legislating here. I need to know about e-cigarettes, vaporizers, nicotine products, which thank you, includes, well, uh, yeah, I can't imagine a cigar that doesn't have nicotine. Um, uh, all alcohol, doesn't have nicotine. So we're not talking about that a bit in that lounge thing that you just set up. Kratom, CBD, hookahs, et cetera, or even your paraphernalia. If any or all of that exceeds thirty percent of total sales, yeah, I, I think it's just, I, don't ask, don't answer a question I didn't ask. I didn't ask how many receipts you get in a bag, sir. Um.
If I may, uh, Director Mihen just came up with something, uh, stipulating that we can make a distinguishment between, uh, what we're proposing and what the concern is for like, uh, cigar shops as saying, uh, it can't be onsite consumption. Um, just plain and simple, um.
I like that.
Uh, so that there would be that, Mo, you got something in mind to include onsite or, uh, not including onsite or what would that sound like?
I love a good conversation.
First, I have to give credit to, um, our clerk because she reminded me of this as well. Um, I think it would be, this would be where we would say this does not include, so this type of establishment does not include onsite consumption. So that would take care of any, anybody that would be selling a, a cigar at a, like a bar situation.
For the purpose of onsite.
For purpose of onsite.
Cause I think it's important, cause you walk out of a store, you light it up, then you're, now you're onsite consumption. So that's what I'm saying for the purpose of.
Yes, correct. Yes.
Mike, thank you. Again, Maria, thank you for bringing this up. Here's, here's, based on my personal experience, which is anecdotal, but you may share it. Um, we would frequent a pizza place in the last town that we were in, and there was a cigar lounge there. I, I don't smoke cigars. Um, so I did not frequent it. I, I noticed though that, um, there is no ability to contain all the, uh, what would be a non-pejorative word, sales that were, that were, that were being generated at that shop over to the pizza place where I was taking my kids and my friends. And, and that's part of what I don't want. That's part of what I would think it'd be off putting in a community.
Yeah, so there are di- there are different, um, Doug, that's a great comment, but on the opposite hand, I enjoy the smell of a good pipe. I like cigars. I was in the military. I would go to all the dining ends. Yes, smoke on occasion. Okay, great. I'm not a smoker, but if it's offered for a specialty event, sometimes you do. So there are differences in opinion. That's why the thousand feet within another establishment near a church, I, I'm okay with all of that. I like the addi- addition of the, you know, not including onsite use. Because in reality, um, people have different desires and that's part of the vision. So there is give and take, right?
Yes, I, I agree. My question is then how are we managing the places for onsite consumption if we're excluding them here?
We're not.
Okay.
Not yet. When I say not yet, we don't have that before us. So I, I would like to just exclude that until anybody decides that they need to include it, which I, I think, you know, cigar bars are fine. They're, they're purposeful. They, 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 people go there, they buy their cigars, you know, the Cohibas, whatever, and, and have a bourbon, and I think it works out really well. Uh, but that's not what, I, I don't wanna muddy the waters with two different concerns if we could. Does that make sense?
It, it does. Right now, I think to the point that you made, that if any product that exceeds twenty or thirty to, right, and that includes nicotine, and that would be a cigar bar, then you're right out. It, well, if you're.
Well, that's where we.
Less than a thousand feet, less than five.
Well, that's where we would, we would exclude those that are for the purpose of onsite consumption. So these are not, these are not onsite consumption facilities.
Okay, so we are adding, we are considering the addition of that?
I would think if that was, if that's what the, uh, board would consider to keep it clear. Ed, anything for us tonight?
Not yet, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Went down this end of the table, John.
So ju- just to kinda put a bow on this, we're, we're excluding cigar bars from this regulation. Quote cigar bars, onsite consumption, we're, we're going to, we're, we're gonna leave them out of this and not deem them to be vape shops.
True.
I think I caught that we were gonna consider that as a board. And if we.
Not, not for this, this one.
Okay, okay.
Because that would be a cigar bar as an onsite consumption. So we're excluding anything that has onsite consumption, no? Or are you thinking it excludes cigar bars?
Yeah, so I, I might.
Yeah.
We're, we're either not adding language to this or we are adding language. That's what we're talking about right now, right? And, um.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, we would need to have a motion. Would that be correct, Mr. Chair?
Not yet. Um, John was still asking questions, I think.
Um, I just wanna bring up the question that is on the back of my mind. I tried looking it up, uh, real quick. But North Carolina's law on indoor smoking, is that part of the conversation here? Um, and to what degree? I don't know if that's just explicitly rules out government buildings and restaurants and bars, or if it's all indoor public places. So that kind of adds to this, uh, conversation in which case I have my homework cut out for me and I can, I'm equal to the task. I can totally find that out, but I don't wanna, uh, get direction from you without considering that kind of legal ramification and then present it back to you only to find out, wait a second. Uh, that's not allowed to be able to make that distinguish with.
Yeah, cause I'm looking at this, and if you did an onsite consumption or excludes, uh, for the purpose of onsite consumption or excluding them, then all the vape shop has to do is say, all right, they're gonna be able to smoke here. And that just defeats this whole purpose.
So, Mr. Chair.
Uh, hold on, John was still, I interrupted John too. Give me a second, Maria. Good.
Okay, so, so I think, well, I guess the main thing that we're, we have to decide is, is how to deal with either excluding or including cigar bars with, with this, um, three point eight.
Maria?
I, uh, Mr. Can I go? Yes or no?
Oh, yeah. Yes, please. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we send it back to the staff for Wendell to conduct some additional investigation. There are kratom bars that do have onsite services with CBD and kratom in Asheville, North Carolina. They are well attended by young personnel, and we're always looking at young versus old. In order to eliminate the onsite usage, I would recommend that there be a definition for a kratom vape shop versus a cigar bar by separating the definitions, but using the same four elements. You can look at the difference between a luxury location and what is a CBD kratom bar.
Have we reached the point then that we're gonna let perfect get in the way of good or was the board's pleasure? And I agree with what you're saying, Maria. I, I think we should push it back. Um, but I, I just wanna make sure, are we going to miss anything by not acting on it now? And allowing the Alderman to add to it themselves, which they have the absolute ability to do.
Uh, I think, I think we're ready for a motion. I'm okay either way, but I've expressed my concerns and ideas.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair, did you wanna talk a little bit more about the intent? Um, or is this, uh, was this some guidance explicitly from the Alderman in? Uh, it's, uh, we don't know anymore about the intent.
The Alderman asked to have this, um, run through the staff, through the planning board onto them. I don't know that they've had an opportunity to give it as much thought as we have, which is, there's, it's like any, any ordinance we do, it, it, there's a lot of questions that always come up and it's, it's well to have embedded, but I'm just asking the part, do we ever run into a problem where we wanna get a, um, a change in the tax amendments or to do a tax amendment? That's, might not be perfect, but it's pretty good. Or should we wait? Or is this just so new? That perhaps as Maria said, we wanna kick it back and say, little bit, little bit more homework on this. And I think you've heard our questions tonight, so I will understand the motion, uh, from the board on what they'd like to do.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, uh, before a motion, I, I don't mean to interrupt. I, pardon me. I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm gonna hit this, uh, head on. Um, are we looking at defining cigar bar separate from, I, I know, uh, Madam Warren had mentioned, uh, the, the difference between kratom vape versus a cigar bar. But cigar bar is gonna have to have its own parameters of definition. Otherwise, you're gonna just have a cigar bar, cigar bar that also happens to sell vape, paraphernalia and things like that. Um, I just wanna make sure that I'm covering all bases here, um, when I, uh, take this back to the office.
Well, in, in that vein, I was going to, uh, forward a motion that asks staff to develop a different, a separate definition for, uh, a facility with onsite consumption like a cigar bar or, um, you know, a vape bar, uh, that's clearly separate from a retail shop. And if we have that definition, we might still wanna have a discussion on, um, whether to include that defined entity in this, um, U D O or not. But I, I think maybe the first step is to ask for that definition.
Okay, before I accept the motion, Maria, I wanna just check with you. You have some thoughts too. Would that cover off what you're looking for?
I don't know whoever made that, uh, suggested motion, but I'm in agreement with it, with it. I would second a motion to send it back to separate the definitions and make it clear because these may or may not be things that the Board of Aldermen have considered since kratom and vape shops are somewhat for the younger generation.
Sorry, um, no, no, that's, that's good. Thank you. Um, but I have to have a motion first and I'll accept the motion from me, John, if you would.
Motion would be to request from staff a definition of facilities that include onsite consumption, whether they be cigar bars or, uh, other tobacco products.
I second that much.
All right, all right. Uh, Moschman made a second discussion.
Uh, John, does that, um, prevent us from considering this and making a recommendation on this motion as written? Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that's the direction we're going, Doug, but okay, I, I would defer to.
I would agree. That's, that's what you're looking for. But I wanna make sure you asked for a definition. Are you also looking for a separate tax amendment for cigar bars and the like? So on, for all, all onsite consumption versus purchasing.
I, I'm not prepared to make that motion just because I think the definition might provide clarity.
Okay.
Um, as, as to what, whether we wanna include those facilities in this three point eight.
We can also leave it up to staff too, as, as they go through the definition, if they determine that they need additional, they can do that. All right, so Moschman made a second and further discussion. Where are you? All set?
I'm set.
Okay, uh, Moschman made a second and further discussion here, and I'm all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Wendell. Good work. I, I know it, it's, I would rather have it happen here than go into the Board of Aldermen and have.
You and me both, Mr. Chair.
Say again?
You and me both.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm very pleased that it happened here.
Yeah.
And, uh, there. So thank you.
Super. Thank you. All right, staff reports. And I should add, nice work by all. Uh, good conversation, good discussion, good points being made. This is the sort of, um, vetting that we wanna make sure that we do with all these types of, um, planning issues that come before the, uh, planning board before they go to the Board of Aldermen. Thank you. Mo, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Ashley and members of the board, thank you very much. Uh, tonight's updates are gonna be, um, pretty short. Um, wanted to go over a few things with you. First, I wanted to just kinda give an, um, outline of how this update that was in your packet is, is constructed. Um, I know there's some, all of the boards that we have here, these are all the boards that staff are liaisons for, or we are, um, supporting those boards. So you'll see that we are, that with the Board of Adjustment, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Board and the Forestry Commission, so that, or Committee. So that's why those are included in that, not necessarily. or committee. So that's why those are included in that, not necessarily that there may not be an update for all of those boards unless there's something specifically relevant to the planning board. So I wanted to just kind of lay that out there in case there are any questions of why the heck are we getting all of this, all of these updates? Um, to date, we don't have any minor or major development projects, residential or non-residential, that have been submitted for review. There is an application for a modification to a planned unit development, a PUD uh at the property at Southport Crossings. There's a section that is residential that they wanted to make an amendment to. Uh, staff are reviewing that application. We just received it at the end of last week, so we are still reviewing it for completeness. So as soon as that is taken care of, we'll take it to the T R C and then bring it forward to the planning board for review. The bed and breakfast text amendment was referred back to the planning board at the October Board of Aldermen meeting uh with the request that staff meet with the owners of the bed and breakfast. So we have had an opportunity to sit down with the bed and breakfast owners, so we are still working on that language. So you'll be seeing that uh probably in at your January meeting is what we're considering. Uh, the Board of Adjustments November meeting has been canceled due to the holiday. And the December meeting was rescheduled for the first week of December, so that'll be Thursday, December fourth at four thirty at the Indian Trail Meeting Hall. The agenda for that meeting is gonna include a special use permit for an accessory dwelling unit. And also, there's gonna be an appeal of a code enforcement staff decision on that on that agenda itself. Um, the Historic Preservation Regular Meeting will be held on Wednesday, December third at four o'clock at the Indian Trail Meeting Hall. There to be continuing with the review of the Board of Aldermen's questions and suggestions um that are being um continued from the November meeting. Uh, the Board of Aldermen U D O Amendment priorities and in addition to the priorities that are being collected from the Action Matrix that was provided to the planning board at our your last meeting are gonna be reviewed by staff and will be presenting some of those findings in the beginning of twenty twenty six, probably more likely later in this like winter for those. But we I wanted to let you know we have received some of the feedback from the Action Matrix. So very thank you very much for that. Um, but I also want to remind everyone, this is kind of a really big picture view of of these action items. So we wanna take the look at the goals and the and the policies themselves to see what kind where do we wanna start with the big picture things, and then we can work down into the real minute uh information and find out how we wanna really implement the strategies, figure out what products or plans or or you know, updates to any of our other plans need to be taking place for those. So thank you much for that and um wanted to keep you updated. I know that we had talked about we've talked about the um development dashboard that the chair had brought forward to us all to review. Staff is working on that, filling in the gaps and um working on the table, and we'll present those with our final project in the new year. Uh, so those are our kind of our development things in the in the works. There are um three other projects I'd like to um touch on this evening. Uh, staff has rece- received a grant um with the North Carolina North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program. And right now, we are in the early stages of collection of data. We're working on our Community Action Team Development, which is our stakeholder group. So we met today to review the twelve months um schedule. This is a a grant that is gonna be a twelve year or twelve twelve month, I apologize, project. So the final product uh will identify solutions for um to withstand significant hazards. So we're looking at all kinds of different hazards, environmental and non-environmental um hazards. We also have our Multimodal Acceleration Plan that I've spoken about previously, and that's moving forward. The survey is online, and that is gonna be open until the end of this month. And we will be it once this survey is closed, the the plan will be coming to for um coming to the end, final portions of it. Uh, that will include creating true projects that'll be um project ready that we can take and move forward for any grant opportunities that may move forward. Prioritizing this is gonna be our walkability, our bike, any trail systems for connectivity through the city. Um, this was also a grant that we received. And then we are also working with the uh Southeastern North Carolina Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a five-year plan, so we're in the process of updating for the fifth for our new five-year plan. There was a public meeting held this evening, but um there will be some other public opportunities for input um as the plan is coming to an end itself. This uh we are looking at the action plans. Staff is looking at the action plan from the twenty twenty Hazard Mitigation Plan, and we are anticipating that the plan will be finished by the end of this year. And we will be bringing it forward for review and hopefully adoption in the winter of twenty twenty six. We must have a uh adoption of this hazard regional hazard mitigation plan for grant opportunities through FEMA. So um, all of the counties were with Pender, Brunswick, New Hanover, and Onslow County are part of this region that we're working on this hazard mitigation plan. So.
Can you define hazard?
Hazards.
Is this not the nuclear power plant?
It can be, yes.
Can be.
So this so this this plan is looking at cybersecurity. We're looking at hurricanes. We're looking at heat. We're looking at um a lot of different things more than just, you know, we're used to thinking of hurricanes or sea level rise, but this is this really goes out further to include a lot of lot of different types of hazards that that can be part of our community.
Comprehensive. Thank you.
Yes, it is.
That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time.
Any questions by the board at all?
Mr. Chair, uh, Mo, a couple, um, the Action Matrix, um, what timeline? What are you? What are you thinking?
In 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 what sense?
Yeah, he said it's a big it's a big project, so.
It's a huge project, and that's why I and I I think that realistically, we're not looking at trying to dig down into every single one of those. That's why we're looking at give me your one or two things that that you feel is is would be important, knowing that we we know what the Board of Aldermen has requested for some uh U D O updates already, or if there's other policies or other plans. What what are the big things that that when you look at that matrix, you're like, you know what? When I look at the city and I look at at the way the future's moving or what we've we've got going on development wise, or demographically, what are the what are the, you know, kind of the top things that rise to the top that we need to really look at first?
Yeah, and that sounds like a great starting point. I the list I gave you was nowhere near two. Were you going to come back and say, hey, great, can you get that down to two now?
Well, I was gonna, yes, I haven't reviewed all of them. I have received I've received yours and and um uh member Horton's, so um we'll we'll take kind of a look at those and see what we can come, you know, get together and and as it moves forward, we'll we'll just go from there and see what we come come up with. And yes, I will. We'll bring things back to you.
Yeah, cool. You think by end of calendar year, first quarter, new year?
I'm thinking, yes, probably first quarter.
First quarter of the new calendar year. Okay, thanks. Um, and then can you give some examples of hazards that we're going for for the mitigation funding? Nothing nothing's jumping specifically. Did you guys have a list and go, oh, this is it? We're we're getting this, this?
No.
Okay.
Um, so this is what we're proposing or gonna be looking at for the Resilient Communities Program are we're also looking at the hazard. We're looking at areas that we are susceptible, which is going to work together hand in hand with the Hazard Mitigation Plan itself.
Okay.
So there is not, we don't have projects at this moment that we're gonna say, hey, this is this is something we need to look at or or this, but we will have the opportunity to find some projects that we can say, hey, this would help us out for X, Y, Z hazard, and then we can take that forward because this uh R C C P, the Resilient Coastal Communities Program, also has grant money for implementation. So once we get this portion of the project completed, we can move forward and hopefully get some some money to get those, you know, implemented on site. Yep.
And then just one last, and this is on the Southeastern Hazard Mitigation Plan update. What what is your all's role? Is it to review a draft document and say, looks looks good to me or no? I think from Southport's viewpoint, we should change this in.
So it's not us. We are looking at the actions themselves.
Yeah.
So I we look at the goal. We look at the goals, and we are part of the goal-making process to make sure that the goals for twenty twenty five's plan are matching the needs of the region itself. So we look at the different goals.
Yes.
So then, once we look at those goals, we also have an action matrix, very similar to the comprehensive plan from their twenty twenty plan.
Yep.
So staff are looking at that and looking at all of their, all of the different measures that were in that plan. We have to then go forward to say, we've completed this. We're moving this forward. We're deleting it because we have completed it and then adding any other um actions that we want to include.
Are you? That makes total sense to me. Are you active then in conference as the thing gets drafted, or are you more of a reviewer at the end?
We are. I had a hour and a half meeting this afternoon as the part of that. So yes, so while we are actively working on.
And the and the um long our long-range plan, then you're using that.
Correct.
Yeah, good. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Please.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Um, Ms. Meehan, are you looking for suggestions on items for the hazard risk reduction?
For which for which plan? I mean, I'm sorry.
You said you're on a committee in which there's grants and there are you're trying to look at hazards, right, and how to reduce them or implement them. Do you want those as individual email comments? Do you want them tonight? Um, how would you like a comment related to that for your uh county committee or whatever it is?
So for the one that we are working on with the state for the Resilient Coastal Communities Program, we're just in the very beginning stages of that. There will be a lot of community engagement, so I would like to wait until that comes forward. And we're we're trying to decide now if we wanna do a really a larger community kind of open house type of engagement. We wanna do some smaller um drop-in types of things. So we're we're working on the public engagement portion of that. And I have a feeling that there will be opportunity for more specific one-on-one recommendations at that time. So at this point, we are in, we don't need any true recommendations. Obviously, if you have any in mind, I'm happy to receive them and keep those in mind for our um when we start working on these.
Okay, I have one little note, and I will send it to you via email.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice work. Thank you. Okay. Next up, um, Board of Aldermen Liaison comments, anything for us tonight? Like to make sure that we wish Frank well. He is um moving a moving along away from the Board of Aldermen, so this will be his last meeting with us as our liaison, and I wanna wish you well and say thank you for everything and um sticking with us. Um, yeah, we appreciate your 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 work.
Thank you. Um, when this board came together, I looked around and went, this is gonna be interesting. I think what we may have done is we may have created a monster, and that monster is too darn smart. You've got a bunch of very, very bright people who don't mind asking questions, don't mind digging deep, don't mind doing the research, and don't mind voicing their opinion. And I think that the job that you guys will be doing or already have done with the with the rules and all these things you've already put together to educate yourself are gonna pay big dividends. The more work you can do and the more you can use the staff and get stuff out of them, use the clerks, get information out of them, the easier it'll make the job that the Board of Aldermen has to uh look at. Now, if you take a look at the Board of Aldermen, they all have uh inquiring minds. They like to know. They like to deal with facts. And the more facts you can give them, it's easier to make their, you know, to make a decision on something, and you guys are doing on you guys are doing that. And it's been it's been an honor and a privilege to have worked with you. Keep up the good work. Have fun. You're getting ready to have some projects. Don't ask you here to keep you busy for a few days. And I also, based on uh way you guys talk now, I anticipate some very long meetings. Enjoy.
Thank you. You too, and I wish you well. I you know, thank you for sticking with us and everything that you've done for us as our liaison and coming to all of our meetings and and uh listening through all of this. Hopefully, we won't be going to eleven o'clock in the morning as we saw earlier, but um, yeah, I think we have a good group of folks, so thank you. Okay, uh, board comments. Let's start down the end with Ed. Anything?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, before I go there, I just wanna make sure anything from staff anywhere out there at all? City clerk, assistant city clerk, anything for us? Planning staff, anything for us that we haven't already hammered you on tonight? All right, thank you. Guys are doing a great job. Thank you. I I I appreciate your patience. Ed, I'm sorry, anything at all?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Doug, anything?
Uh, I appreciate the opportunity that you uh are enabling us to ask questions and even to learn as we go. That's been a big part tonight for me. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Maria?
No, no comments, no questions.
Okay, John?
Nothing now. Thank you.
Yeah, you've got a few seconds left. Fred, anything?
Nothing.
All right, let me just throw a couple of things out there. Twenty twenty six is gonna be a very busy year. Um, we've got the Alderman priorities that they're they've sent over to us. I think we'll be sending them back as well with the whole the new board coming on, and we wanna make sure that we are staying current with what their um priorities are. We've got the comprehensive plan priorities, the U D O rewrite, um, which I think Mo is putting together some R F Qs for to um and hopefully get some funding this year as well, as well as ongoing U D O and other updates. Uh, Mo mentioned the um Dashboard Pipeline Report, which um continues to um be in work and is the bane of um just trying to get the data together. On that thought, um, I sent something over to Mo to consider for next year's budget to obtain some planning software so we can actually capture these things online to make it reporting a lot easier. And after I sent that to her, I found out that the Brunser County Planning Department also has just installed some software for doing that. So I reached out to them today to get some information on what software package did they buy and how much did it cost? I haven't heard back yet, but we'll pass that. Once I get that, I'll pass it on to Mo as well. Just trying to make the information easier to obtain for not only our board and not only for the Board of Aldermen, but for the public as a whole um as well. Um, I, we have a vacancy. As you know, Kevin Lachlan uh resigned, and the former chair Sue Hodgson and I met with Kevin. He was blasting through one day. We got him fifteen minutes. I gave him a um parting gift, thanked him, got a took some some quick pictures in front of the uh community. I'm sorry, the uh Welcome Center, and um I'll send those around. Um, we'll we'll certainly miss Kevin. Uh, I think he was a really good out on the board and 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 brought a lot to it, so we certainly wish him well. Um, I've also recommended to the Board of Aldermen that Ed, as our alternate be moved up as as has been tradition. Um, and also, um, as part of that, we've got open positions. I reached out to Tori today. She let me know that it is closing tomorrow, so if somebody is interested in being joining us, and especially now that we have a new new handbook on how to do all this stuff and procedures on how to do all this, which will have in January. Um, hopefully, we'll get some interviews done. But as part of both of those, um, with moving it up and with uh the uh interviewing, I recommended through the city manager that they hold off until we have the new Board of Aldermen come on board because um I think a new the new members have it or the new member has a um deserves uh an opportunity to voice with the planning board or who's gonna be on the planning board for the next couple of years. And um, so anyway, so I sent it over to Noah. Whether the the current Board of Aldermen decides to do that or not, that's up to them. But I just thought it was, you know, having a new member, having a new Alderman come on board, he should have an opportunity to have a voice in it as well. Um, let's see what else. Yeah, Frank, thank you. Uh, next meeting for scheduled for December eighteenth is canceled. Um, we don't have anything even in the pipeline, so there's no need to have a meeting, especially with the holidays and and family time. Uh, the next meeting after that is scheduled for January fifteenth of twenty twenty six. Uh, so I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. And if there's nothing else before us, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion been made by Doug. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, second, second by three people. We pick one, Scott, whichever one you want. We'll do. We'll use John. Uh, Moschmann made a second and any further discussion here or none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, suboted. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Good work tonight and good night, Southport.
Good night.
We are adjourned.